Let the rect reflect, we have reconvened with all members absent excuse. Please rise for pledge allegiance and please remain standing after the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Request a moment of silence and prayer for Madison resident who died suddenly. Andrew Hurley, you may have seen the lines of families at Rose and Court today. Andrew leaves behind his wife Beth, they were raising their four children, Quinn, Sean, Grace, and May, all very active in Madison sports. In fact, today's Madison High School's girls varsity soccer game was canceled so the girls could attend the viewing. Our thoughts are with Andrew's family at this very difficult time. And please also let us remember all those in the southeast and in the Caribbean who are recovering from Hurricane Matthew in Haiti, the Bahamas, North Carolina, and to those in Bermuda, as Nicole, as the category of four, bears down on them. Please take a moment. I have a motion for the executive minutes of September 26, 2016.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Regular minutes of September 26, 2016.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Welcome all for a special night, a Thursday night, as we, for Columbus Day in recognition of Yom Kippur, have moved to Thursday. And I want to thank Ben Wolkowitz, who was standing in the on-deck circle tonight because I was going to be somewhere else with a half the eleven Conleys together for a little reunion these couple of days, but Hurricane Matthew decided to change my plan, so it's good to be here in Madison and thank you for being ready to pinch-hit. We'll probably hear some comments about Bottle Hill Day, but once again, we had a great Bottle Hill Day. The weather certainly didn't scare anyone away, it was, the crowds were as big as ever, and a great time had by all. And today marked the last of the farmer's market, as I see John Hoover here, who's been there every week volunteering, another great season. I talked to a Chatham resident, I was going to keep that secret because they were saying how nice our, I slipped out yesterday, they were saying how nice and lively our farmer's market is, and so they love coming to ours, and so we've really got a great reputation. Employee of the month for October is our qualified purchasing agent and personnel director, Linda Sawyer. Making selection committee was impressed with her extraordinary effort in planning and executing the borough auction. Her commitment to dedication to this project resulted in successful disposition of furniture and equipment no longer used by the borough. And for library report, the Madison Library has an interesting program this month, as always, but as we know, this is a very special month in Madison for Drew University with the folio, first folio at Drew. So this Saturday, October 15th, at the Shakespeare Theater of New Jersey will present, have fun with Hamlet, a fun introduction to Shakespeare's language. This workshop encourages kids and their families to explore classic texts through their voices, bodies, and imaginations. It's presented as part of the Shakespeare's First Folio, as I mentioned. And we did the proclamation at the last council meeting, recognizing this month as Drew Shakespeare Month, but if you please take a chance, this is almost a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to go up there and take a look at the folio, one of limited copies out there, almost 400 years old. It includes plays that would have been lost had these people not, around Shakespeare Theater, converted it into a folio. The book is right open to be or not to be, so to be there. The library sponsors two book groups also. On Monday, October 17th, at 7:30, evening group will discuss Among 10,000 Things by Julia Pierpoint. The daytime book group will meet Tuesday, October 18th, at 1:00 PM for a discussion on Commonwealth by Anne Patchett. And appropriate for the month, New Jersey Ghost Hunter Society will present Haunted Transportation on Wednesday, October 19th, at 7:00 PM. The society's founder will discuss ghostly sightings via land, sea, and air. And the library staff continues offering training and downloading eBooks using libraries' catalog and databases, as well as assistance with your personal devices. And Library 101 is offered in 30-minute sessions on Monday mornings and Wednesday afternoons. Tech Tuesday appointments are available, assistance with your personal devices. Reminder, at our next meeting, the 24th, we will have on the agenda a discussion related to electric rates and possible dividends, and so please put that on your calendar. And for Bob Landry, I've got the clerk's office announcements in anticipation of November 8th general election. The clerk's office will be open late for voter registration until 8:00 PM Tuesday, October 18th, the last day to register before the election. And registration forms, as well as mail-in ballot applications, are available at the clerk's office and online at MorrisElections.org. And also, the reminder to those who are eligible, their electric utility rebate programs end December 1st, forms are available at the clerk's office and online. Right. Before we get to our reports, I'd like to have a statement on second reading by the clerk.
This ordinance was scheduled, the schedule for hearing was introduced by title and passed on first reading at a regular meeting in the council held on September the 26th, 2016. It was posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I open the hearing for anyone wishing to comment on this ordinance. I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 60-2016.
Second.
Any discussion? Council vote, or council roll call, please.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 60-2016 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice there of a newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Call up Resolution 297, Resolution of the Borough of Madison, Appointing Police Chaplains for the Madison Police Department.
Mayor, I move Resolution R. 297-2016.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
All right, may I have Chief Lieutenant come on up, along with Reverend Scott Foster from the Presbyterian Church, and Reverend Craig Dunn from Madison First Baptist Church, to swear in our first two chaplains.
Hold the Bible for that, and we'll do it same time. Repeat after me.
I state your name.
I, Reverend Scott Foster.
You solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
Thou wilt faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
Chaplain of the Madison Police Department.
Chaplain of the Madison Police Department.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
Thou'll support the Constitution of the United States.
Thou'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And thou' wilt bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
In this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, and thank you for serving Madison.
Thank you.
Don't go too far, we need your signatures.
Thank you, Mayor. Starting with the electric department, they did a number of pole transfers on Crescent Road and Green Village Road. There's some, as you may know, construction going on in that vicinity. And they also completed installation and transferring of services to a new secondary cable on Crescent Road. They laid out the transformer pad for Ewell, which was discussed at council several months ago, and they installed new primary and secondary conduits to that well. New fence and bob wire has been installed at both substations, and the rest of it has to do with various types of repairs, street light repair, service upgrades, et cetera. As for the water department, they continue to take, and this is an ongoing process, they continue to take samples testing for chloroform, e. coli, and volatile organic compounds, and this is for state mandated testing. As far as the borough's concerned, it really is an ongoing project. There were 73 requests for locating and marking underground utilities. I don't know if that's a record, but it's a pretty high number. In addition, water for KRE project was turned on and off through leak detection and repair, and a bacteria test was taken, results are not in yet. And then finally, the interconnections with American Water were inspected and tested. I also have the finance report back in.
Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, finance report, the finance department would like you to know that the payroll department reconciled and processed the second quarter internal report of contributions, which is required by the state of New Jersey. It's a lengthy certification process that confirms pension contributions and other information. Next up, the payroll department is working on the necessary steps to comply with the Affordable Care Act. And then finally, the department has been estimating salaries for all borough departments as part of the 2017 budget process. There also is an interesting activity that's been going on in the tax assessor's office, which is certainly worth a minute or two to talk about. They recently mailed out added and omitted assessment letters, and the tax collection department issued the associated tax bills. Basically, added assessments occur when real property becomes taxable after the assessor's books are closed for the year. If there were no such law, many properties would escape taxation for a period of several months until the next regular assessment. There are three types of properties that received added assessments. First are structural changes to properties, such as additions and interior improvements. Second are new homes that are built. And third are properties that were formally exempt that became taxable. The tax, your property tax bill has, since 2013, has gone up 2.2 percent. A good part of that is due to this activity. So in other words, we build the base, or we grow the base of taxable properties during the year, that to some extent offsets everyone's tax liability. Thank you, Mayor.
Health, Mr. Catalonello?
I have no report, see you, Mr. Mayor.
Public safety, Ms. Vitale?
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier today, Chief Datchison and Lieutenant Longo attended the final police accreditation hearing in South Brunswick, along with 16 other municipalities seeking their initial or re-accreditation. The Madison Police Department was affirmed for accreditation following a unanimous vote. The formal presentation will take place at a future council meeting by the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police. So they, these two gentlemen really worked very, very hard on this, and they really deserve a lot of credit for this. Also, the Madison Police, PBA Local 92, will again host our annual food drive to benefit the Interfaith Food Pantry of Morris County in collaboration with our community partners to include Drew University, Whole Foods Market, and Realogy Corporation. Citizens can drop off food donations at the police headquarters and Whole Foods Market, Drew University, as well as Realogy Corporation. We'll collect food internally to support this effort. On October 6th, Patrolman Sean McCarthy received a certificate from the Morris County, from Morris County recognized in his military service in the United States Marine Corps, and now in the United States Navy. Since Patrolman McCarthy is currently deployed to Africa, his award was accepted by Sergeant Lisa Esposito. I was in attendance with Chief Datchison, Lieutenant Mishah, and Lieutenant Longo, and it was an extraordinary evening. There were lots of people from all over the county that received the certificate, and they're veterans of all kinds of wars, but Purple Hearts, and it was just extraordinary to see these young people that survived Afghanistan and Iraq and now are working in this field. On Friday, October 7th, the Madison Police Department hosted their first coffee with a cop event at the Waverly Restaurant on Waverly Place. This event is meant to bring our citizens and officers together to simply meet and have a conversation over a cup of coffee, building a community police bond. The event was deemed a success, and Chief Datchison intends to host another event again. On October 16th, from 10:00 to 5:00, we will host our first annual First Responder Appreciation Day, held between both the Madison Public Safety Building and Madison Volunteer Ambulance Building. The event is being hosted by Madison Police, Madison Fire, and Madison Ambulance Agencies. Members from local and outside agencies will be on hand, taking part in real-life demonstrations. There will be an open house, live music, food trucks, and activities for the kids. Madison Police took receipt of our first child identification equipment, enrolled the program on Bottle Hill Day, making approximately 50 child IDs for our residents. The program will be offered to parents once again at our First Responders Day this Sunday. From the fire department, during the month of September, fire department activities consisted of 22 general alarms, 21 still alarms, 27 investigations, 44 EMS calls, for a total of 114 calls for assistance in September. Two department drills were conducted, 55 fire prevention inspections were made, 21 resale smoke CO inspections were made. The fire department participated in Bottle Hill Day by cooking burgers and hot dogs in support of the annual Madison PBA car show. On Wednesday evening, September 28th, the members of the Madison Fire Department trained at the Morris County Fire Academy's Live Burn Training Building. Firefighters were put through three evolutions that simulated a second-floor fire, first-floor flyer, and a basement flyer, fire. Firefighters are able to experience temperatures in excess of 500 degrees, thick black smoke, and observe fire rollovers at the ceiling. Madison ambulance squad also attended the training. So this week is Fire Prevention Week. Residents are reminded to check their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms to be sure they're in good working order. During the month of October, the Madison Fire Department will visit and present fire safety programs to all the preschools K through eight, both public and private schools, and to our seniors. Each problem, each program is tailored to each respective age group. And they're also reminding everybody that they are hosting on Sunday, October 16th, the First Responders Day. I just want to bring up one small item from Patriotic Celebration Committee. We had a visit on Tuesday at their meeting from the commander of the post at American Legion of 43, and the Patriotic Celebration Committee and American Legion are going to be working in conjunction with each other, and what they're trying to do is to find out who is serving locally now, and that's just not Madison, it's Florham Park, Chatham, Chatham Township. And they want to put together names, because what they want to do is like during the holidays is to send, you know, special gifts to those local residents that are now serving our country. So if you know anybody, you know, get in touch with us and/or the American Legion in Florham Park, and that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Community affairs, Ms. Bailey?
From the senior center, the knitters group, a large number of volunteers got together, and they knitted knitted hats for the patients, Carol Simon from the Center undergoing chemotherapy. The center sent back a lovely note to them and said how grateful they were for these hats that they knitted. And then I would like to thank everyone for volunteering and participating in Bottle Hill Day. It was a big success despite the weather, and a big thank you to Lisa Ellis and the DDC for making it happen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Rowe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First on the road construction work, Cephalion Sons Construction has started the Prospect Street reconstruction. That's taking place between Woodland Road and Keeve Street. They've made significant progress in new curb, sidewalk, and drainage improvements, and they hope to complete the mill and overlay work near the end of the month. Micropave Inc. has completed the crack ceiling contract work on Woodland, Garfield, and Green. We're hoping to keep the roads that we have already done in better shape. The proposed Central Ave improvements to curb, sidewalk, and drainage were presented earlier tonight, according to Mr. Vogel, who's conceived of the future. There were a number of residents who are either supporting or opposing the sidewalks at the location on Central Ave. The 2017 road program bid documents were prepared, and will be ready for council early in 2017. We want to stay ahead of the curve as we did this year. And finally, from that vein, the state of New Jersey has finally agreed to fund the transportation trust fund, so municipality projects will continue for foreseeable future. We still are waiting for money on Ridgedale, and hope to get funding for, or we have been approved for funding on Prospect once we complete that work. In terms of sanitary sewers, the North Street pump station rebidding was successful, and a pre-construction meeting will be scheduled upon receipt of contracts and bonds. And for storm sewers, the Elmer Street storm sewer bid documents are being prepared, and we hope to have them out early in 2017. And from the DPW, just reminding everyone that leaf pickups will start on the 24th, which is in a little under two weeks, and the balance of this is what I would call work in preparation for the winter. Thank you.
Thank you. Any communications or petitions?
Yes, Mayor. One email dated October the 12th from Dolores Marquez of Hoyt Street regarding the volunteer program at the senior center, the TCAP Day, thanking the, thanking Edna Irleyburns and Helene Corlett for their assistance and enthusiasm with the program.
Thank you. We're now on to the first of two invitations for discussion with the public. This is the one that is only limited to items on the agenda discussion, and also resolutions that are listed for consent agenda. The items for agenda discussion are the best practices for 2016, fire department rules and regulations, and Burnett Trail Development Project. And reminder, shortly after our hearings, there'll be an opportunity to comment on other topics. Anyone wishing to comment on those topics, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. And we're on to current year 2016 best practices inventory. Our CFO, Jim Burnett.
Thank you, Mayor. As we've done in the past, it's that time of year to review the best practices checklist. For those of you who don't know what it is, the inventory is a list of questions that's created by the Division of Local Government Services. The purpose of it is to encourage municipalities to embrace best practices and promote financial accountability, sound management, and transparency. The state fiscal year 2017 Appropriations Act requires that the Division of Local Government Services issue this checklist. There's always new questions every year. It was really revised this year significantly, and based on the answers that we provide could impact or determine a portion of the borough's state aid that is received from the state. I'm happy to say that, and a copy of the packet is available up there, and a copy was given to council, I'm happy to say that there were 30 questions, and the council was able to answer affirmatively for 29 of the 30 questions, so that's a score of 97. That's an A+ I think, which is excellent. The one question that we're unable to answer yes to is one that we have been unable to answer yes to for a number of years. In this particular instance, it was the question number 10, and that question is, have all the audit findings from 2014 been identified in the corrective action plan and addressed such that they're not repeated in the 2015 audit? As the mayor and council know, when we review the audit with, on the Savatia, we talk about one of the recurring audit issues, which is segregation of duties. And this is an audit comment that is received by hundreds of municipalities, there's 560, over 560 municipalities in the state of New Jersey, and hundreds of them receive it for a couple of different reasons. We used to receive it for two, we're down to one. We used to receive it for two because our bank reconciliations and general ledger were done by one person. We're now in the process of splitting that, and we talked to you about doing that about a year ago. The second one has to do with departments that issue permits. Their preference is that a department that issues permits does not also receive the money, that there is a separate cashier function. And some municipalities will see that, but it's very rare, where you will go to, say, the construction department, get your permit, and they'll say, okay, you owe $150. Instead of paying the construction department, please go down to the cashier's window, pay $150, and then come back to the construction department and pick up your permit. They like that separation of the collection of fees and the issuance of permits. The problem with that is it's, and council, we've discussed this in the past here with the governing body, is financially that is not feasible, or would be significantly cost prohibitive to create that, because we'd have to have a cashier at the health department, we'd have a cashier at the police department, we'd have to have a cashier, separate cashier function here in Hartley Dodge, or we could have one cashier here at Hartley Dodge, and then someone would go down to the health department to get a marriage license, and they'd say, okay, well, we'll give you a marriage license, but you have to drive to King's Road to pay, and then drive back here to pick up the license. So because of that, councils acknowledge that it's not feasible to do that. So that's a recurring audit comment, and one that we've intentionally not fully rectified. Other than that, every other question we were able to answer, either in the affirmative or not applicable, there were a couple that were not applicable, like flood zone areas. So I don't know if there's any specific questions on this, hopefully, if there are, hopefully I can answer them. This was a great, you know, combined effort with payroll, with personnel, and with administration, so you know it's required that we have this discussion here. And then our wonderful clerk, Liz Osborne, will certify that we had this meeting, that it was an open public session, and that Liz and Ray and I will certify that we had this discussion and presented this material to you.
Any questions or comments for Jim? Job well done, thank you.
Thank you.
Fire Department Rules and Regulations.
Periodically, by resolution, the governing body updates the rules and regulations of the fire department. This was a 75-page document. Our borough attorney's staff assisted the fire chief in that process. We discussed it in detail with the council, and we're recommending it for approval this evening to adopt the revised and updated Fire Department Rules and Regulations. The only significant major change would be a recognition of a, an assignment that we don't currently have of lieutenant. Right now, we have a fire chief, a fire captain, and the remaining personnel, we have 12 firefighters. This will introduce the concept as an assignment of a lieutenant, so we'll, for the first time, have a superior officer supervisor on all shifts and all squads in the firehouse at all times, and also as the incident commander at all fire scenes in the event of an event or an emergency. So we recommend it for your approval.
Any questions, comments? This is Resolution 290 on the consent. Burnett Trail Development Project, Ostry?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm asking for approval of funding for the Burnett Trail, $7,500 from the American Space Recreation and Natural Preservation Trust Fund. The trail begins, there's a typo here, the trail begins at Burnett Road and enters the Madison Recreation Center. The path comes up behind the community garden and ends at the parking lot. This trail has always been identified on our MRC master plan. Bob Vogel, who will be overseeing the work, tried twice for trail grants from the state, was unable to get them, they were denied, and so he's coming to the was unable to get them, they were denied, and so he's coming to the open space for full funding and asking the council for approval. He can do it this fall, and it provides access to the park from the North Street, Chateau Terry area, and with our trail system in Madison, we try to make connections every step of the way, so this is another way of getting into the park besides the main entrance, and allows us to go up to Bailey Ellard eventually, if we can get a sidewalk down from the traction line down to Park Avenue, we will then have access, and it'd be like a loop of trails in Madison. So I'm asking for your approval.
Questions or comments on that? Very good, and that'll be Ordinance 62, which is listed for introduction.
Thank you.
We have a statement for ordinances for hearing.
The ordinance scheduled for hearing was introduced by title and passed on first reading at a regular meeting of the council held on September 26, 2016. It was posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
Call up Ordinance 61-2016.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, amending Chapter A 238 entitled the Madison Chamber Joint Meeting.
I open the hearing on Ordinance 61. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 61-2016.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call or vote?
Mr. Cattinello?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. Declare Ordinance 61-2016 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now we're on to the second invitation for discussion from the public. This is when you may comment on any topic. Please step to lectern, state your name, your address, write to Sam on the clipboard, and try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to comment? Seeing none, I close this part of the hearing, of the meeting. And we're on to introduction of ordinance. Will the clerk please read a statement?
The ordinance is scheduled for hearing, have a hearing date set for November 14, 2016. It will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
Just as a reminder, that is two meetings from now because of the short time in between now and our October 24th. I call up ordinances for first reading, and ask the borough clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance 62-2016, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $7,500 from the Municipal Open Space Trust Fund for Trail Development at the Madison Recreation Center.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 62-2016.
A second.
Any further discussion?
I have one question. So have we checked with, like, the Eagle Scouts on this to see if they want to get involved? I know historically, or there we have a history of, you know, scout projects for building trails in that area.
I think they need, they will definitely need equipment.
I'm not saying not to fund it, but maybe we can...
Help them.
Yeah.
Have them help us, yes, absolutely.
So we, okay.
Yeah, we can, yeah. I'll, did you have a name?
Yes, we can, I can get that to you.
Yeah, that would be great.
Excellent. Any other comments, or roll call or vote?
Mr. Cattinello?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. Ordinance 63-2016.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $10,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of replacement bulletproof vests.
Mella?
Oh. I'm sorry, where was I? Ordinance 63.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 63-2016.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call or vote?
Mr. Cattinello?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. Consent agenda resolutions, will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move consent.
We got the line up mixed up, because I'm not supposed to be here.
Yeah, go right ahead, yeah. Who was going to be mayor? No, no, Ben will handle it. Yeah, Ben will handle it, and I'll...
I'll cross my name off.
Okay. I move Resolutions 283 through 296, and then 298 through 300.
My second motion. Any council discussion or any that need to be pulled? Roll call or vote?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I would like to have a little bit of discussion by way of explanation for R 286, the lieutenants.
Okay, so we'll pull that and move that separately. Okay, so motion is stated minus R 286. Roll call or vote?
Mr. Cattinello?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. Motion for Resolution 286, please. I move.
Second. Second.
Okay.
I just think it's important that we explain to the residents that the promotions are really a supervisory promotion that will help with the safety of firemen responding to a call, and that there's not a big increase in cost associated with it. I mean, you can imagine, some people will look at the new organizational chart and say, boy, we've got a lot of supervisors and very few workers, but in fact, this is important, as the chief explained to us, in the case of fires, et cetera, so that we can have proper chain of command, and always have a supervisory role at the firehouse. And I just wanted to make that point before, I mean, you could imagine...
Very good point, thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call or vote?
Cattinello?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. There is no unfinished business. Approval vouchers, please.
Safety, $35,317.68. Health and public assistance, $8,875. Public Works and Engineering, $60,807.73. Community Affairs, $9,877.81. Finance and Borough Clerk, $211,936.6. Utilities, $325,413.73. Total is $652,153.76.
May I move the vouchers?
Any discussion? Roll call or vote?
Mr. Cattinello?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. There is no new business.
And with that, I move, we adjourn.
Well done, thank you.